Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners meeting of October 3rd, 2024. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have our full board here today. We have Commissioner Cherichello.
Good morning.
Commissioner Coyle.
Good morning.
And myself, Commissioner Goddard. Ready to move forward into our RFP openings.
The person only is relative to the epoxy flooring, and I move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second, any discussion on this RFP? No? Okay. Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Cherichello.
Yes.
Okay, I vote yes. All right, consent agenda, meeting minutes from 9:12 and 9:19.
I move to approve the September 12th, 2024, non-public meeting minutes and September 19th, 2024, public and non-public meeting minutes.
Okay, so I have an issue with the September 12th, non-public meeting minutes.
Okay.
On the 12th?
Yes, the one that says sealed until July 1, 2025.
Let me just get to line up, you know.
I believe we.
So.
That's what we voted on.
Oh, I don't have an issue with the seal till July 1.
Oh, okay.
I was just identifying the.
Oh, you're just trying to orient it.
Um, so I'm not sure that it's appropriate to speak about non-public minutes in public. So if you would consider.
Tabling.
Tabling just that or revising your, your motion to approve the, the minutes, the public minutes and not the non-public minutes of July 12.
A quick question, is your, it's not just the script now, um, error that you're fixing, it's more detailed.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, I will revise my motion to approve the September, I mean, sorry, 19th, 2024, public and non-public meeting minutes at this time.
I'm sorry, it's the September 12th meeting minutes that we're tabling.
That's what I said, that's why I said just approving September 19th, public and non-public.
Oh, there's no public meetings on 12, okay.
Can we've already approved those.
We already proved that, okay. Now we have a second by Commissioner Cherichello. Uh, any further discussion on those?
You really cranked through these, thank you very much, thank you for really.
Yeah, the minutes were just right in terms of concern. So, uh, on accepting the minutes, Commissioner Cherichello.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
And I vote yes. We will take up the other issue, the other minutes in our non-public session. Uh, we have a discussion, the HR bi-weekly recruitment report. Anybody like to say something about that report?
I just want to hear some highlights, if you don't mind, just give us some.
So I know, um, Commissioner Goddard, you had asked to break down those, um, you know, openings by the units, and you can see the reflection.
I, I was very pleased to see that, so now I know how many people we need to hire just to cover the units that we have open currently. I think that's like goal number one. Uh, and that's very helpful, thank you for adding that into the report, so thank Autumn.
Yeah, that may be fluctuating back and forth, that's.
Of course.
So we'll see that. We've had some uptick on hires, um, towards the tail end of August. Um, we expected we would have some more activity around maybe the LNA's at this point because we had advertised about the, um, the stipends, and that's out there. So we are getting some movement in that. Um, she is doing some interviews. Um, I guess it still kind of points to some of the information on the activity on LNA's while she's got applications and outreach and pre-screening, some of the stuff again, she still talks about on the secondary page about when those outreaches happen, the interviews and what's going on with that. So there has been a lot of questions around 12-hour shifts and 10-hour days. So that's something more reflective of the discussion maybe with Chantel and the Director of Nursing because that would be all around scheduling and how that can be done, and that's something.
And that's something that's already been on my list for evaluating, um, looking at, because we do barages for some of our agencies. It poses a different concern when you look at it from like a call-out standpoint. It's a lot harder to fill holes that are 12 hours or call-outs. And then the potential ramifications where it would cost additional from a, a short pay and some of those components for it. Um, so it's, I started the conversation, so unfortunately Michelle then went on vacation, and then unfortunately it was back yet. Uh, so it is on my list as one of the things to look at, and it's something that it may not be the whole building that would benefit from it, but looking at like a skilled unit where admissions come at different times, looking at running just one unit on a 12s opposed to a whole house is sometimes a more manageable. Um, so it is kind of on my list already at looking at some of the pieces. It just, I haven't had the ability unfortunately due to, um, circumstances to connect with the full nursing team and deal and.
Yeah, it was brought up before, but we had a lot of, um, openings. So, you know, you have to have some of that built up of staff before you can kind of consider it. And that's what we had discussed a couple, I thought, a year or two ago, you know, but that's some of the information we're getting right now.
One of the things that I, my takeaway from looking at this is that our turnaround time with LNA, hiring LNA's, I think are reflective in the, you know, from our starting pool to the end pool. And then the other thing is kind of interesting is sort of the decision to, uh, applicant is a previous employee that's not eligible for rehire. So what does that mean, not eligible for rehire? Who's making that decision? And who made the decision that can't be rehired in the first place? Like, what is the basis for the lack of rehire?
That would have been from the OVD side, so that would have been from a Jason or Steve Woods at that time. And it's in there for performance issues, it could be a number of things, so it sits in there. Um, we pull the files, we look at it, and I have gone back to the previous long-term care administrator. I read the file over, they go through it, they talk about it, and then they have a decision to make with the, the Director of Nursing, whether they're gonna take them on as a hire or not.
Would you go back to the old?
We go back to the personnel file, we look at the file, and anything.
Who reviews that?
I review it and I bring it over to the OVD, which.
Okay.
The.
So Shan.
Jason, Chantel, with Jason at that time, we haven't had any, that's come back since.
If we have someone new, so say Jason marked someone, or Steve Woods marked someone, no rehire. And they reapply here, and it could have been during their time here, they tested positive for THC. I'm just, you know, like, so.
If they are not rehired, there aren't any employees have been here, so they wouldn't have gotten through the THC at that.
No, 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 what if they were randomly, I'm giving a hypothetical, they randomly drug tested, they, and it's a.
And they fail.
And they fail, and so they're terminated with the do not rehire. Evolving changes or the issue with Steve Woods is they were not showing, they were, um, there was, it wasn't performance, it was based on reliability, there were too many call-outs. Now, fast forward, it's 10 years later, and, you know, it was during a period where they had small children that they were sick off. I don't know, like, whatever. My point is, what, are we just accepting that no rehire, or is it going back to Chantel or, you know, D O N?
Disqualifier.
To review? What is our process for reviewing it, bringing it back to review, not just internally with HR?
If it is a rehire, it's coming back through, we pull the file, I review it, I look at our investigation files as well in cases, any investigations on that person, I bring that over to the OVD, we talk about it, make a decision on whether they want to go forward with it or not, if I have any history on something where there was some, maybe.
Okay, so there was one incident, it looked, appeared on the report, that there was one person who was disqualified from previous.
Right.
Did you discuss that with Chantel, that specific person?
I don't know who that was.
Because Jason left in June, so, you know, it wouldn't be making this report if it was, um.
I'd have to ask Autumn what that was.
Okay, so could we pull that particular hire out and, um, share it with Chantel and make a decision whether or not she might reconsider, uh, hiring that person or what the circumstances were?
You're saying you, but your process is to bring it to Chantel, so you don't know why.
Well, Chantel might not have been employed when this actually happened.
That's why.
Fair, fair.
Right.
So, fair, touche, and that's why I'm trying to say that I'm not sure who that was, so I had to pull it if you want.
But if you would pull it again and bring it, that would be, okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, nursing recruitment report, this is kind of the same topic, but, um.
I know, you know, um, I do think we should, in terms of this presentation, just for, um, I noticed that this is totally like that, um, you print in black and white, thank you, and the color is really beautiful, but it's like, we don't, we, if, if we're printing lots of copies, I think we shouldn't be printing in color because it is like a lot of, uh, cost and for the amount we use it. Now, Commissioner Goddard and I don't, we don't, uh, we just get the electronic copies.
Right.
Just like, just from our cost.
I think that's a general, that if we can print something in black and white that doesn't need to be in color, we'll save a little bit of money along the way.
Just.
The clicks cost more when they're color clicks on the, uh, on the, uh.
But let's go to our, we have a resident expert, so.
Anyway. All right, so we're at agency staffing, uh, agent, excuse me, nursing recruitment report.
I'd like to bring up something if you don't mind, I'm looking at this page, we are, the recruiting of the LNA.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to understand it, so I'm looking at number one, applications received, I get four.
This is.
This is recruiting activity on LNA, it's like, on the second, second, third page down.
Is it the second?
Nursing recruiting report.
Yeah, thank you.
Page three.
Two, three.
Yeah. There you go.
I'm looking at, I'm just looking at, I'm looking at it as a funnel, everything is a funnel. So I get four applications, great, that's the beginning of the funnel. I go to the next step, outreach, phone, email, I get four, so I'm keeping those four, so I don't see a problem in this, in this point number two. Then I go to pre-screen and I lose half of them. So what's going on in pre-screen that I'm losing half?
So if you look down the second page, it tells you the applicant's unresponsive then to calls or emails. The applicant thinks the pay is too low, the schedule does not work for the applicant, they don't want to work holidays or continuing weekends or hours. The applicant thinks the location is too far, and the applicant does not want to contribute to the membership time and system. That's the information that Autumn has gathered.
So when you say pre-screen, it's a one-on-one information on back and forth, is that what pre-screen means?
Yes.
Okay.
And what is the time between the outreach, phone, email, and to the pre-screen? What's that timeline? How much time is that typical?
I think she reaches, she does the outreach on the phone, and she's doing it within 24, 48 hours. She's doing it right away.
So do you mind if I continue, um, just so I, I don't lose my train of thought? So I'm, I'm looking at the funnel again, four, now I'm down to two, pre-screen. Interview, interested in interview schedule, so I, I'm keeping the two.
Right.
After the questions and pre-screens.
Yeah.
But the two that I have are still there. Then it's interview transpired and I, I lose one of them, what does that mean?
The candidate then was a no-call, no-show, uh, to the interview.
All right.
Or if they don't present well, red flags came up in the interview.
Okay, that's important because I'm already losing half again from four to five.
And again, can we talk about what's the timeline between, so from pre-screen to, uh, interested in, in, I assume that during the pre-screen, the, the interview is also scheduled, is that true?
Yes.
Okay, so what is the ti, to me, the timeline between for the interview scheduled and the interview transpired? What is that timeline?
I'd have to ask Autumn, I don't want to speak out of turn for her, because she could be doing it that same day, or she could be doing it the next day. And I don't wanna, I don't want to put words in her mouth and how she's doing it.
Well, isn't that an issue that Chantel is working on to expedite those activities? So I kind of leave it on her to continue.
Um, not to over, um, I, we've had meetings about some of the pieces. The LNA specifically is handled internally on that side where Autumn is doing that, which I think is completely appropriate for that level. I think there's opportunities on the nursing side with my team, which we're getting in place so that while that candidate's on the phone, we're scheduled, able to schedule the interview, so we're working on my side to have kind of a core group that are going to be available so that, you know, it's not just on one person and their schedule. So when we're on the phone or when Autumn's on the phone with that individual, that they're scheduling the interview in real time to get rid of some of that lag. I don't know from like when they apply to when we reach out those pieces. We haven't had a chance yet to kind of dive into, a lot of our big things initially have been looking at kind of more, how are we, um, how are we advertising ourselves, changing, I had sent the flyer to speak more about all the truly wonderful things that aren't common. I know that we have shifted, and correct me if I misspeak, where prior there was a lot of Zoom interviews, we have shifted to more of an in-person one, which I personally think that's important. Not everyone's great on, you know, a Zoom or a, that piece, and also then if the location's gonna be an issue, they've already driven it. And when you walk through this building, it presents beautifully, and you can sell things without having to sell things. So I think that has been a good change from the ones that we have said, um, and then, you know, I know, we, again, we've talked with HR and have looked at, you know, some of the past applicants or past agency that are out of that non-compete and some of those things, which I believe Riley and Autumn have already started on. Um, so a lot of the pieces we've looked at kind of initially have been around how are we marketing ourselves in some of the general systems? We haven't had a chance to really dive into the, now what's the turnaround time, what are some of those barriers? Because one of the big barriers outside of that LNA from the nursing is truly on my side of the house and not the HR side of the house. Um, so that's already being rectified, um, but I don't think that we've looked at yet, like if I applied on a Friday, when is it that I'm calling? You know, what's, is there delaying, you know, that piece, because we do know there's a delay for at least nurses from my side.
Right, but not LNA's. I hate to cut the LNA. So I think what our goal is, is really to target, I mean, I, we understand the nursing's different. Our goal is to get LNA's, and so what I see, when I see one, two, three, four, five, I'm like, pre-screen and interview should kind of be merged, you know, it's a little extra time, time to do, conduct these interviews, but, you know, if they, it seems like this is the way we get hooks, and, you know, we go from four to one in that timeframe, if we could accelerate it, it's not like there's so many interviews that the time it would take to do pre-screening and interview as one would be so, uh, onerous.
Uh, would you?
I have talked to, um, Autumn, and she does know that her goal is centered on LNA's. And as things come across in the YOGA, um, and in the, uh, her first, uh, hit is to grab that, you know, LNA application and do the outreach. So we discussed that last week, that even though we have other things going on, we've been able to be successful with the department corrections and the maintenance, but the primary goal right now of like secondary is the others, because those are coming in and we're being very good with that. But the focus needs to be on the LNA's, employing those applications in pretty quickly when she sees them each day, because I'll get a hit on my side that they're coming in. Uh, I get the hit that everybody's applying and for what position, so when I see the LNA's, I kind of make sure that she's touching those.
And, and when they come in, do they get a tour?
Well, I'm talking about when they come into the system, I can see them daily.
When they physically come here for an interview, do they get a tour?
Oh, yeah, Autumn does the tours.
Of the nursing home?
Of the nursing.
Yeah, okay.
The thing is, some of them still don't want to come in, um, so she's respectful of that, and she does her best on the screen, but she is trying to get them to come onsite.
Uh, because that would seem to be an advantage that we might have, getting people here, maybe avoiding the Zoom. If you're interested in coming to work here, come, show up, and if they can't show up and they're only gonna do Zoom, then move on. I, I, you know, but.
Still get people through Zoom too, I don't want to factor those out, even though they're Zooming.
Well, they're Zooming, but they're just wasting our time, they can't be bothered to drive here. I don't know, I, I'm not trying to dictate how you do it, it's just.
It kind of merges the pre-screen with the interview.
Right.
I mean, you, it actually, that's.
Which is fine, because we just need bodies here to look at how nice and clean this facility is so that they, they, they don't judge working in a nursing home based on past experiences in other nursing homes. Commissioner Cherichello.
Yeah, thank you, uh, so I'm looking this, I'm, I'm looking with, with the glasses of a salesperson, that's, that's what I know. And I would, you know, I'd feel a little bit better if I had one at the end of six, if I had one, but I'm getting zero, I'm getting zero results. That's just telling me I'm spending a lot of energy and getting no results, and I have a concern there. Somewhere in the process has to change because your return on investment is not there, period. And, and I'm not blaming anybody personally.
I'm not at all. But if she gets ghosted through it, and if it's hard, she gets that far.
All I'm saying is this.
Some of them are ghosting at that point, and it's hard to get them back.
Okay, can I get the floor back? Every time I have a floor, someone's interrupting me, I don't know why, but. All I'm saying is, is I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but I'm getting zero results, zero. If I'm in a sales position, I don't get paid. I get zero, so something has to change in the process. I don't know what the answer is, I just think that we have to change how we're looking at things a little bit different, and I'm glad, I'm happy that I'm hearing some, some positive things. Bring them in, yes, in person, it's a lot better, right, versus Zoom, so I think on that path, we're going the right way. But somewhere in this process, we have to change this because, as we all know, you know, we, we, our goal was to get 17 people in a year, and that started in July, the clock started in July, and I'm concerned that if I keep getting zeros, 17 is just not gonna happen, and then that whole thing falls onto the taxpayers because right now we're using upper money for the stipend. I've said that before in the beginning, I had a concern, I, I, I'm hoping that we can turn it around. I'm just trying to figure out where in the process we can make different changes.
Okay.
But you're good?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
And it goes back to, we need to get rid of pre-screening. I mean, pre-screening in the inter, I mean, what I'm seeing is you come in for this pre-screen, this whole pre-screening process is, is shorting the interview, and you're getting ghosted because guess what they're doing, taking another job. You know, like, so we are, this delay with the pre-screen, I'm like, why are we doing that? We should go outreach, phone, email, write to interview. And if people, you know, for the most part, it's, of course, they're extenuating circumstances, so I'm not saying it, we'll out-Zoom, but what?
I don't want to totally build that up.
I'm just teaching. The, um, but just, we should be scheduling to Commissioner Goddard's point, and, you know, what, uh, Chantel, you were saying with respect to, um, you know, what we have to sell, we should be going from that outreach phone right to
An interview.
An interview in 24 to 48 hours, that, that call, you know, we get that application, there should be 24 hours that we're calling back, and then another 24 hours to say, come in.
Invite them to have lunch.
And, and if they can't.
I mean, whatever, excuse, I'm sorry for interrupting.
It's fine, I don't care.
Muffins.
I knew that we were going, I'll go to hand break.
I, you know, whatever, whatever carrot we can, I mean, we need them to get.
I mean, whatever.
I'm sorry, but you finish.
I know, but what I'm seeing is this drag-dope, I, just from, when we, I see all these steps, I'm like, this is a drag-dope process. And this is how we're losing people.
I don't want to speak to Shan, I'm sorry, I don't want to speak on behalf of Autumn, because I don't know if this is pre-screen and this is together, and she's just telling the steps, but I'm not here to speak to that piece through it, because I don't know on that, on that, if she's pre-screening and they're coming in the next day, you know.
Okay, so would you?
To have her come, so I think so that she can talk, and also, I want her to hear where you want to take out this pre-screen of that, if that's the case.
I.
I'll tell, what I would suggest is that you consult with Autumn and come up with a plan to make it the most efficient and fastest way from the time somebody responds to the time they get into this facility.
Sounds good.
And, and then let us know what changes to improve that.
What I would like to see is that between the application and I, and this is ambitious, I understand, but between, I'm, but it's not undoable, um, from the application received, that we should have them like scheduled, and of course, it's scheduling specific, but there's no reason that within 24 hours, we don't have the caller email, and at that outreach phone email, we have an interview scheduled that way, that's what we need to be doing. We can't be sitting around, you know, and like, having more steps in the process, and, you know, and I'm not suggesting that this is on Autumn, I think there's a process that's been in place for a long time in the HR, and that's okay, like, it's, 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 you know, for a number of reasons, but that process isn't, it isn't working. It's not in this climate.
So you'll come up, I just have a discussion and?
Yeah, Autumn's been very, um, good at, um, pivoting, um, quickly on her feet, so I don't think this is gonna be something else, um, out of range for her to be able to do. And I definitely will have that discussion with her.
Okay.
Thank you, but, yeah, and I mean, maybe there's a bigger HR question about that process globally and generally. You know, I think, um, corrections, some of their, they're doing their interviews, they're, you know, they get it in, they, they're sort of, they're not going through HR, but they're going through and getting their, you know, that's next day, making those calls to set up those interviews. So again, we need to shrink, 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 and I think there's been historically this pro, process that maybe oh, in an overarching way needs to be reevaluated, so, I mean, we still need to be thorough and complete with background checks, but we need to be ready to, we just, it's a different climate, hiring climate, so.
We need to work harder to convince these people to work here.
And we need to do it faster, because they're getting offers on the spot the next day with someone else, and it's like, wait, what? Why am I, why am I gonna sit around for two weeks or longer to set up an interview when I get a, I mean, that's what some of the ghosting is, they just take another job.
A little time, so, yeah, whatever, okay, we'll have a discussion about that, maybe Autumn can join us next meeting, and maybe she can consult with Chantel also on some suggestions, and maybe some recipes for muffins. I would entice them to come in.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Uh, can we move on to nursing, uh, staff, agency nursing staff report? Um, we're hiring too many agency, that's all I have to say.
Before we move on, I just want to talk about what we're seeing with the LNA apprentice program. I mean, there, there's, uh, we have two there, so that's, that's a real point of success, and go ahead.
Yeah, it is, and I was just gonna say, in respect to just Autumn, she sent me, she updated, and again, she makes beautiful flyers about some of it. So she sent me a flyer around the LNA class, and her and I had started to have conversations about being able to send that to some of the local high schools and put that out kind of as well in addition to the other one. So I, I think kind of, to Allison's point, Autumn's really wonderful in like the good person to have the point person and how we changed in advertising that, and I think, you know, some of the conversations we've had even with Allison is, and with my team and utilizing when you're out and doing those things is how we're kind of targeting, not just through Indeed and not through, but through like community, and, you know, some of my team and myself have shared on our, you know, social medias and on our website and stuff, some of those flyers as well. And I think some of the opportunities, I don't think we have done that for the apprentice one on my side, that maybe I can have Jess send to that too, for continued outreach.
I know some of us on our side have done it, so that it's out there, so I think we're getting a lot of naps on that because it's, we're paying for the cost of that, and so people are, it, it's great, some people that weren't sure what they wanted to do and have an opportunity to have something funded for them, and maybe start a career are eager to start. So I think she might be up to five on the LNA apprentice, which is a good thing, because we know that funnel, those five are coming to us, uh, which is a good thing.
And then the partnership.
Well, you stopped before I did.
Okay, I'll let you through. Uh, with respect to some of the partnerships with the local school.
Yeah, so I.
That, um, that aspect.
I was able to find the old contract from way before me, um, looking at being able to kind of adapt some of that. We'll send it through FINX, it would be a February, end of February start date with 15 individuals from all the local high schools, five days lead. Um, for about, I think it was like two to three hour timed slots. Um, I sit on a board for a nursing school that's kind of over in 30 minutes, 40 minutes from here. I've started conversations with them already about if they could, if they'd be open to especially, you know, proximity, yes, we're farther than some of the other places, but we're also closer to Mass and some of those, and they do Mass as well. Um, so I've started some of those conversations, we actually have one of our semi-annual meetings coming up, and I hope to be able to speak with the owners, the individual that runs it. Um, and then, uh, Lean has already reached out to UNH to bring, um, see if there's a way to bring clinical back through from UNH nursing school. And so all of those pieces are moving because I truly think there's always a stigma around nursing homes and an idea of what it is, and Rockingham County is not that. We are truly far above that in everything that is done and offered for our residents, and it truly is. You can't, you know, we had a D O N candidate last night that walked through, and the first thing out of her mouth was, I thought you were lying, like, and then I saw the building. I was like, I know. So I think truly getting people back in and seeing the difference is both. So I think truly getting people back in and seeing the difference is going to be an additional asset as well. And I'll have muffins for them.
Um, as far as the apprentice program, this is a, a new concept, but we talked about this four years ago. At the time, it was, we couldn't start a class until we actually had five people. And that never materialized. Unfortunately, the first couple of years, we never had five, I think we had one, one or two. We had five people, but then they fell off several rows.
Yeah.
So am I to understand that now the rules are different? We're, we're, we're gonna bring them in-house, whether that's one or two? Or am I misunderstanding?
There's two separate and distinct things here happening. One is a partnership with. LNA.
Okay.
And the second is. The apprenticeship program in terms of we pay for schooling at an outside facility.
At an outside.
Yeah, what I'm speaking to is in order for, um, licensure, whether it's a nursing school or an LNA, they have clinical sites. You do a clinical affiliation, so that, um, fifteen is through C coast. School of Technology, which is all of the local high schools again in our communities, but also stays true to our mission of giving back to our community. Um, but with that, there in high school, it's, there is, there's, most of them are seniors. They would finish in May with us, so they would be with us from February to May. At that point, they'll see us. Will we get all fifteen? I'd like to hope, but even a handful of something, um, that's at no cost to us. It's just a partnership for them to utilize our space. It's extra hands with their residents and then they graduate.
Yeah, clinical studies here.
So it's a little bit different.
It is. There's no cost to us, the county. It's a partnership for them to utilize our space and, um, to teach.
We're a teaching house.
Okay, so you know, there's no minimums or maximum amount of people.
No, and because that particular program is through the high school, there's maximums in that, um, from a board of nursing standpoint, it's a one to eight ratio for students.
Yeah.
So they will have to figure out about either having potentially two instructors or doing like a rotation.
Okay.
Uh, but that is no cost to us. It's truly just utilizing our space as a teaching and, uh, working through some of those kind of semantics.
Okay, um, and lastly for me, um, probably dating myself, back when I was in high school, we had career day. And people would come in and you'd be, you know, you could, if you were interested in accounting, you, you could listen to an accountant. Do they still do that? Uh, and are we active? Can we, can we have some of our, um, our. Nursing nurses go to these high schools on a career day and, and tell. Uh, you know, tell. The benefits of nursing specifically at Rockingham County. And I do agree with you, I mean, I think the fact that. If we bring them here, like you had mentioned. Face to face is completely different. That's a, that's a bonus. But the fact that they're working for. A place that's efficiency free for three years. I mean, it's got all the accolades should really help us. Distinguish ourselves above and beyond any of our competition. I, I just think we gotta get that message.
But even some of just their general principles that you see, when we walk the buildings here, the building is clean, the residents are happy, the staff are, you see staff, you go into other nursing homes and because they don't. Necessarily have that same support and layers, the staff are out straight, it's a lot harder and those things are very noticeable. And that alone speaks volumes. If I'm looking for a physician to know that I'm gonna have the resources, the support and it's gonna be a manageable piece though to do the best job in and of itself will sell somebody.
Okay. What you did. Um, I would like to add that I, I'm in, in listening to. Some of this conversation, that it might be advantageous. To have a career day here where you invite the entire class. Uh, of health arc students from a particular high school, just to come and visit, listen to us give a little bit of talk and, you know. And a little refreshment.
Open house.
An open house, right? Just to, more muffins. Just to get them to walk through and, and I bet they would like it and it will probably help in our recruitment down the road.
Yeah, and I have started, I haven't had a chance to connect on all of it with Allison, but through Jess, who does a lot of our marketing. Um, in out, community outreach, I think, and we started the conversations about, we do a beautiful job marketing what we do for our residents, but there's an opportunity to truly show and market it. Some of the things that we do internally for our staff as well and acknowledge some of that. Um, she had mentioned even looking at doing some kind of an open house and, you know, even looking and I ha- I have not had a chance to touch base with Allison about it, it's even, you know. There's an opportunity that you could do it where it's not even necessarily just, there's so many branches throughout the county that it could be something on a bigger piece. Um, we. Haven't fully had a chance to touch on some of those, but I know that some of the individuals on my team as well, I've kind of been pushing them to. Why are, like, what is it that brings you here? Let's capitalize on that and have those conversations. But then in addition to that. You know, being creative and everybody has a different past and experience and things and bringing forward different ideas, um, on what we can do to kind of push that. And I know Autumn's had a few as well. Um, and just. To, to your point. It's great the systems we have, but in this market, because there's so much competition in a nursing home like this, living and else and other nursing homes. Um, and private care is, you know, how are we gonna get the people that don't even know we exist yet? And they may not know they want a new job until they come and see us.
Yeah, and you put everyone in the atrium, sorry.
Yeah.
Where it's beautiful and we have Glendale do one of their, you know, they really, Glendale does a beau- beautiful job catering.
More muffins? They, now you need to pass the recipe on.
And for you, you know, I agree to open house ideas.
I'd also like to suggest that if we have, uh, an opportunity to provide transportation for high school students. Uh, where that might be a roadblock, I don't know if our van can accommodate a half a dozen. Uh, uh, students, if it could, uh, I would suspect that the health arc would have, they'd have to go to their school bus and, you know, they'd have to have. You know, there's a cost involved and. For us, it would be to our advantage to go pick them up. At Portsmouth High School or Salem High School, I know has a, a healthy health arc, uh, program. Uh, or wherever and like which students would like to come? If you get a half a dozen to come in for just a little tour, that would be.
And just the, the clinical site that we're doing is the health kind of program. Um, for all of the towns, so it's the counties or this areas version of that and it's the second year students. I think the opportunity, because those are individuals that have already decided in that path, they want to do that, would be to target the first year that is undecided of what they want to do and then sway them into. The side of it, um.
But also the first year are less likely to have licenses.
So they wouldn't yet. So the way that it works is the first year is just very generic anatomy. They're kind of just. Getting their feet wet, so to speak. And then the second year is where they break up into if they want to do LNA or they want to do. Maybe other options, lobotomy and things of that, um, where, you know, to your point, bring some of them into so that they're then choosing. LNA.
Right.
In the future.
Okay, I, I know this has been a lengthy discussion, but it, it's the most important thing that's, I think, the most difficult hurdle we have. At, at the county right now, so it, it, I think it's worthy of the time. Um, agency nursing staff report. Um, any comments on that specifically? Are we still negotiating lower rates?
I think we've gotten to those lower rates, around fifty. That seems to be the market all the way across, even with some of our.
Have we plateaued though, or is there room to keep trying to?
I think the problem is we get to forty-four and below, we're not getting any LNA's from those agencies at all.
I just keep trying because I think it's multi-tiered, bring our own employees, but bring the cost down as well.
Have we gotten a sense of what the LNA's are being paid when we pay the agency fifty, like, the two agencies we're using most are MAS and career staff. For LNA's. And we're paying fifty-five dollars an hour. Do we have a sense of what that LNA that? Is actually getting on an hourly basis?
They're not telling me outright what that is, but some of it goes to some of the housing, some of the other, they, there's some of their benefits, their workers comp, some of those, uh, financial aspects that they have to do behind the scenes.
Of course.
So I think the approximation from, again, I only can speak to what I know from. Prior because the past company and the ownership of pieces to it. Um, I think it's like a thirty percent that goes or roughly is a, and that's. From a few years ago. I don't know if that has since changed with COVID.
Water bath.
Um.
Exactly.
But. Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, no, but that's a good, just.
I think that was the whole testament that I was able to get at one point.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, any other comments on? The agency staff report? Okay, so we'll move on to accounts payable list. We have a, uh, motion.
Sure. Um, I moved to approve the October third, twenty twenty-four accounts payable list total of three million, two hundred, two thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-one cents.
Second, any discussion on this?
What sort of discussion? Um. But our, um, August, uh, men payout was like. Eight hundred and fifty K for claims. Is that high?
It, it's relatively high.
Yeah.
Keep in mind that we do have stop loss.
I.
And that lags behind.
I was gonna ask you, that was my next question, getting into stop loss.
Yes, there's a high individual month. But against, that's why we have stop loss.
I know, but I'm, what I'm thinking about with respect to stop loss is. If we have this. This month, you know, we're early on and we're having huge claim numbers. There, the concern is, you know, as we're, I know this is like. Way down the road, but, um, when I look at these continued costs, I know we'll, sounds like we're gonna hit stop loss, but that means our stop loss is gonna go.
The renewal rates, right?
Our renewal rates are gonna be through the roof.
It's like, I don't know if that's. One case, two cases. I mean, it could be. A handful of procedures that could have to drive.
Yes.
You know.
So.
Increase.
It could be at, no, 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 I'm, I agree, it could be average. I'm more saying that it looked high to me.
Yep.
We should just. Watch that closely because that is gonna factor into. Budgeting, um, for next year. I know it's like, but as we, we've learned, we need to start looking at these things. All these things a lot earlier than, you know. Sometimes we did. And then the other thing is, it looked like it's part of it, because I know this is like a fairly high AP run, um. We had six hundred K in rollover from prepaid in twenty-four.
Yeah, and, and that's just because if you think of it like the insurance.
Yeah.
Like, because some of those, those plans are back, you know, property line delay. Unemployment, all those things were, um, and even our, our excess workers comp, all that's still based upon calendar year that we have. Right up through, we have two thousand and eighteen.
Right.
So one half becomes a prepaid expense, then we do is we do a general ledger warrant entry. In July, usually as far as we classifying, but one half. That was prepaid, now be an expense in the current fiscal year.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Um.
Thank you.
Let's take a very brief recess.
Okay.
Because we have a vote and.
Okay.
Christian Churchill is taking the break. So. One minute, please. Okay, we're back for recess and, uh, we have a motion on the floor to approve the accounts payable of three million. Two hundred, two thousand, five ninety-two dot ninety-one. Uh, is there any further discussion on? Accounts payable payment? Seeing none, Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Hey, we'll move on to commissioners, uh. Brief updates. Does anybody have an update they would like to share?
Um, only to the extent, I have two things. One, um, again, um. Our. Great meetings, just a reminder for everyone in Zoom land. He, um, launch date of each firm meetings, when you can see us on TV is four P M Eastern Standard Time. Uh, grab your popcorn, um, and also that, uh, this week we had an issue with a. UKAG. Um, timekeeping. So just for anybody watching this after the fact, if you had any issues, um, finance is working on it, just, and they put in a ticket for it, but just so everybody knows.
Christian Churchill, okay, I have a very slight correction. It's Eastern daylight time right now. Don't want anyone to be confused on, probably get their popcorn early. Uh, I, all I'd like to, uh, just share is that I'm very pleased with the entire staff. Uh, working hard to improve the recruitment process. I see a lot of improvement. I, I, I know that we'll, we'll reap those benefits in a couple of months. It, it takes a little time to make it all happen. This is all positive. I don't think any of our comments were. A criticism is more of a critique that we are anxious for it to keep it going and going well. I just want to thank everybody for their. Additional efforts and make sure that, that everyone knows that it's not, it's going noticed. That it's helpful. Okay, so I'm, that concludes my report. All right, so we'll move on to the county attorney's office.
I moved to approve the application process for the Victims of Crime Awards. S F Y twenty twenty-six grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars and authorize the acting chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the county attorney.
Okay. Any discussion on this application?
This is uniquely, is a little unique this year because it is a ARPA grant project. It hasn't.
This is still through the N G O J, but still federal source funds. They must be obligating all the monies before the end of the county, right?
And so what we're gonna, it's gonna offset, um, one of the victim witness advocates that we already have. So there is an issue, I mean, because I only say ARPA related because we have to obligate the funds fairly.
Oh, this is still the state. This is state locking in. This is their.
And.
Their portion.
So they're locking us in so they can lock in.
Right.
Which is really what it comes down to.
Normally the application process, I think, is a little bit later. Usually it's in like the next calendar year, but again, twelve thirty-one, twenty-four deadline.
So. We have to obligate so they can obligate, so everyone is.
Yeah, so our performance period on this grant will go out to six thirty twenty-six.
Right.
Which is before the end of the twelve thirty-one twenty-six, you know, fed deadline for more experience about.
But I imagine that we will. We perf- we will perform this far, given what.
Yes, this is, this doesn't cover all the costs, but it does cover a substantial amount of.
We have.
One of the victim witness, um.
We have five.
List or technicians. With the current title is specialist, I think.
Yes.
And then it comes also training, I think, for all, for, I think, for all five sometimes. They, they, uh, have a fair amount of training.
Great.
Uh, they can attend. Pat, do you want to chime in on any aspect of this? I don't think we have any further questions, but.
No, I'm good. I, you know, I'd appreciate the approval just so we can get going on and make sure we have it in on time.
Okay, great. Uh, since we have no further discussion, uh, Commissioner Coyle. Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, moving on to Department of Corrections, travel and training request.
I moved to approve the, a travel and training request for two Department of Corrections employees, G H and J B, to attend the New Hampshire Association of Kansas County's annual conference held at the Omni Mount Washington Resort, November eleventh and twelfth, twenty twenty-four, and an estimated total cost of three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and two cents, as recommended by the superintendent.
Thanks. Any discussion on this request? Uh, Commissioner Coyle?
Yeah.
Mr. Cherichello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, finance office update for two nursing home bank accounts. Due to personnel changes.
I moved to approve the updates to the signers on the Rockingham County Nursing Homes Special Account and the Nursing Home Residence Account. Account with. Bank ending in nine nine five four six and then zero 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 six two to be Scott Priestley Senior Treasurer. Roy, I'm sorry, Robert Troy, Deputy Treasurer, Charles Nickerson, Senior Director of Finance, and Chantel GiConan, Senior Director of Long Term Care Services.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? Certainly housekeeping.
Yeah.
Okay, Rachel, the Cherichello?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
All right, employee retention and engagement, upper fund approval.
Moved to approve utilizing the category two point three five, the ARPA project funds. Uh, in an approximate amount of six thousand dollars to pay for appreciation gifts to active employees as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion?
Just think, I, a sense of where we are on, I mean, I think this is great, um, but where we are on two point three five for project funds and.
Well, that is a separate track from the financial assistance piece, the financial assistance piece. Um, and like the five or ten thousand dollar box has stopped and been stopped for a while. This is just continuing like one offs. For our local business assistance, but also with a dual benefit of, of paying attention.
Right.
Appreciation.
And our numbers are, we have some. What, how much is left there?
Well, I mean, there's still some monies left to be allocated after the last. Piece that we discussed. Like, uh, you brought for last week, uh, we allocated some of those. Uh, five hundred and eight thousand dollars, I think it was, that was worth.
That's right. Okay.
Um. What are we buying?
It's on the.
Lin balls.
Fall tube. It's a pretty.
I saw the tube. I didn't know what it meant.
It's gonna be all the chocolate in this tube that is.
Oh, that's chocolate. We're buying chocolate.
Doors.
Okay, all right, that's, that's what I wanted to know.
Everyone, remember last year we gave them in those boxes?
Those octagon, they were the most, they were the coolest.
Ball.
The, the folding pattern, being in the printing business, I was particularly enamored with the folding pattern that they had to make that octagon box. It was really cool. Tubes, uh, the tube, you know.
They bought them so they didn't make them this year.
Uh, yeah, yeah, well, probably true. Uh, yeah, yeah, well, probably true, but I'm sure.
With this option.
No doubt they were expensive to make, those, those fancy boxes. I, I know, I would have liked to have the job.
Proces and I'm like, looking at infrastructure, like, I'm like, what is the mechanical systems here? And you, occupational hazard, you go baby, you're like.
How did it make this? How did they hold that? Uh, okay, so, that's fine. Uh, on this, uh, motion to spend six thousand dollars for chocolate. Uh, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Churchello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, now, next motion.
Um, I'm sorry. Yes, I move to approve the card designs submitted by Human Resources as the twenty twenty-four appreciation card from the Board of Commissioners and authorized chair, the authorized use of the commissioner's electronic signature as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Any discussion on this?
No.
Looks fine to me. Okay, uh, Commissioner Churchello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
I like that we knew this at Thanksgiving as opposed to Christmas, because I think lots of things.
Earlier is.
Yeah.
Makes, makes it a little more noticeable.
Non-denominational.
Okay, we received some information on E M T and paramedic, uh, requirements and cost of education and training. Um, it was an extensive, uh, a long list that was really difficult for me to kind of absorb. Uh, frankly, um, I'm wondering if you might be able to summarize, you know, like, how much does it cost to become an E M T and how much does it cost to become a paramedic?
It's like twenty, over twenty thousand dollars.
All right, well, okay, that, I wanted to clarify, that's what it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and, um, it's like two thousand dollars for an E M T, but the issue is, it's not, or it's a little less, in fact, the problem is that, you know, the issue isn't getting E M Ts, it's getting paramedics.
Right, right. So, when we were directing the, the, uh, the, the grant writer, to look for grants, I think this is the direction, if we had grants available that we could pay, the twenty thousand dollars for education in exchange for a year of service or whatever, um, to in, in, you know, encourage more paramedics to be, uh, to register in the county, that, you know, if we had a grant available in, that did that, I think that would be an advantage for the entire county, given that Exeter Hospital is, you know, removing their paramedic service. So, if you just.
Yep.
Remind her that that's the direction and the amount of money that we're looking for.
And other, there are other private agencies that do paramedic services, um, but, um, so anyway, you know, we can explore more. I mean, if there's grants, that's one thing, but, you know, where else we could outsource for pyramid?
And then some might be that the grant, the grantee is technically the town that would have maybe the E M T that would become a paramedic. And again, that's where, um, Molly as grant writer could be a resource for them to actually put together, the application and everything, and yes, could theoretically be part of the admin budgets on that grant. Um, for that, for it to actually do on behalf of the town as the grantee. And then that way too, again, like you said, it would be helpful to Rockham County if we just purely get additional, E M Ts as resources within the, the county, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I just have, I just have a quick comment. You know, there's an old saying when I was a state rep, you know, and you put the camel's nose under the tent. And if we go ahead and do this, not that it's a bad idea in itself, uh, I'm concerned that the towns will be expecting the county to do that, to, to have, you know, to keep looking for training opportunities and grants. Because I, the way I see it is, it's really, it, it's really the responsibility of the towns and the state to do this, not necessarily the county. That's where I'm at. Not saying it's a bad idea, I'm just saying, um, I personally think that we just got our grant writer. Let's have her focus in on stuff that we, we can do here, bring in extra revenue here, before we go outside of that to, to the towns right now. That's how I see it, but I just wanna bring that up.
I think it's benefit to everyone in Rockingham County for our grant writer to look for grants, uh, on this topic. And, um, I support anything that she can do, find grants on this topic. All right, any more comments on that? Report. We'll move on to long-term care services, travel and training requests.
I move to amend the previously free travel and training request for an assisted living employee S V to attend the full New Hampshire Association of County's annual conference, held at the Omni Mount Washington Resort, November eleventh and twelfth, twenty twenty-four, with a new estimated total cost of two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-six, six cents for two employees, as recommended by an assisted living general manager.
Any discussion on this request? This is simply to, uh, allow one of the attendees to, to attend the entire conference instead of, only the awards night, because there's educational opportunities, I think, I'm, I'm in favor of it. Okay, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Churchello?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
The one thing I would like is that if, um, just so I can have it, and we approved a lot of these, like, um, so maybe we could just get a, a list total, if every department head could send a list of, names of individuals who are attending from their department.
Uh, and I would like to know how much the county is spending in total on this particular.
Well.
Just, because we're spending a lot.
So just, just to clarify, uh, uh, I decided not to go, since I was not reelected, so, um, saving the taxpayers some money, because it's not gonna benefit them that way. So I, I gave up my seat, just a little.
So, Leila, would you compile, compile a report for us of how much money we're totally spending, on, on this conference? Um, I think that this is probably the final request coming in for that, it's getting pretty close to add anybody else on. And it'd be time that we probably could get a total dollar expense.
Rather, but I think if, in terms of, uh, direction to depart O D Ds and department heads, it's like, if you could, um, send to Leila a list of the employees that, or, you know, anyone from your department who's going, and the cost associated with that. That way we just have that whole list.
Yeah, that would speed up that process.
So that way Leila isn't like tracing every, um, in every agenda, you know, like that. Leila's just gonna be the consolidator of emails, if, if you, if you don't mind, Leila.
And this will help, this will help us with next year's budget, might as well do it while it's fresh.
Might actually be just a quick search through the minutes.
Right.
Rainfall.
Because we've approved everything, so, although this one was approved before, if you picked it up twice, you know, it was approved before at a lower number, so you don't wanna definitely make sure you look at that.
Yep.
Okay, so, uh.
Moving on.
We've proved that, we're moving on to line item transfer.
Yes, I move to approve a minimum transfer request in the amount of sixteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars, dated October first, twenty twenty-four, transferring from life enrichment staff line to life enrichment service contracts, as recommended by the Senior Director of Long Term Care Services.
Any discussion on this line item transfer?
This is for Reiki services, and my question is, how many residents are actually utilizing the service?
And so I think that's kind of where this became the issue that it was, in that it's something that is offered. It, um, has definitely gained momentum, where now providers are actually prescribing it as an alternative to different medications, helping with different behaviors, and because what we budgeted off was a projection, my understanding of the year prior, based off the usage and the estimate, but now it's kind of hit its momentum and a lot of people are benefiting from it, that we had used, I think it was seventy to eighty percent of the anticipated budget at that point. Um, and we continue to have people that it's being prescribed for, we were able, um, to negotiate their rate down, um, to a lower amount, in addition to it with the thought that it would increase. And then in additions, but I know that, um, our M D S coordinator found something that we're looking to see, if there's a way to potentially be able to encompass it or build for it in the offset as well. Currently, that's not in place, but it is being evaluated. But we do have, um, a significant amount of residents that are using it, it's not appropriate for everyone, but for some, they have benefited without it, um, resulting in us then doing a pharmacological approach, which then is always the benefit.
And so anecdotally, are we, are the residents seeing benefits?
Yeah. I, there are a few stories that they had told me, because I was like, crazy, and then they kind of explained it and, um, it truly has, you know, in one case, it was something that it was causing a behavioral issue, and she was, the person was sent for a specialist and she was correct, and the person at Reiki was the one that identified it, which helps the behavioral issue, non-pharmaceutical, and a specialist was needed to see it, which.
That's a big saving.
Yeah, and potential hospitalization and customer satisfaction, so, but it, there is a system in place, um, evaluating, so it's not just anybody can have it.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion on the line item transfer? Commission Churchello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, moving on to the sheriff's office. Pops Office Technology and Equipment Grant.
I move to, uh, accept the award of the fiscal year twenty-four, COPS Office Technology and Equipment Grant in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and auth, authorize the acting chair to sign the award acceptance and authorize the Senior Director of Finance to be the authorized representative to submit necessary documents online, as recommended by the High Sheriff.
Second.
Uh, discussion on this grant? Richard Church.
Oh, um, well, I mean, this is great, this is the, for dispatch consoles.
And this is also from, uh, Representative Pappas's office that we applied to for the earmark.
Right.
Funds, so it gets converted to being a grant. It just took a, um, year, year and a half for it to come through, so.
I mean, it's great, yeah, it's going to pay for the updates, the dispatch consoles, which are excellent and part of parcel of, you know, what we're trying to achieve with the, uh, you know, in the whole spec, spectrum of new facility for, particularly, um, next door for the dispatch, um, the new consoles and an upgrade to the CAD R M S system. So those are great. I, I just had a question in terms of distribution, it looks like the equipment cost is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then other costs are three hundred thousand dollars, and, um, what is that going to?
That's part of the state court tie-in, and it's also part of the migrating equipment here that needs to be, uh, brought over to the new building. Um, so there's a lot of, a lot of that is done with the state court tie-in.
For J one?
Uh, not, no, not for necessarily J one, this is what allows, so say for some reason, uh, we had to, our dispatch center went down, it allows us to essentially tie a piece of our court to the state court as a redundant backup system.
Right.
So that, if, that if we had to re, then rebuild and then go get that information off the state court, uh, we could essentially hold it there, and then bring it back to our, our infrastructure.
You were saying core, not court.
Correct. Core, core, yes.
Thank you, then, that makes perfect sense, thank you.
Okay, uh, I've got some comments.
Commissioner Church.
If you don't mind, thank you very much. Um, I just wanna chime in on this very briefly because, um, I have been criticized in the past for going on trips through the county, for Washington, D C. Uh, and I've gone twice in my four years, um, and, the cost of that was probably roughly about three grand, I'm just guessing, um, but I want people to know that, I'm not trying to pat myself on the back, but, uh, I will pat myself on the back on this one, because, it was me going out to Washington, D C, it's to Congressman Pappas's office to get this congressional discretionary spending piece here, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, when I get criticism for spending three thousand dollars to go on to a, uh, Washington, D C, uh, between some commissioners and previous commissioners, had chastised me in the public for spending the county's money, I just wanna say, bringing back seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a pretty good return on investment. Now, I had asked the sheriff's office originally, when in the past have they ever got one of these, they, they call them earmarks, okay? And they told me that that's never happened before, so I'm very proud of the fact that I did go to Washington, D C. I met with our, our federal partners, and was able to bring back money that will benefit the taxpayers. So, I just wanted to share that, because the general public probably doesn't know that, but thank you very much for letting me speak.
But, I mean, it's not, and, and I'm not diminishing your efforts, but it wasn't you exclusively. And there is the sheriff's department, people here, you didn't go in there like.
Okay, first off, first off, I'm gonna connect to Commissioner Coyle, because they didn't ask me to go to Washington, D C for the earmark. I brought that up to them, I did, so it was me. And as in the past, we hear misinformation, which is very common lately in the political field here. I'm gonna straighten out people when they need to be straightened out with the facts, and that's the fact, and you can ask the sheriff, you can ask the major. Okay, it was me visiting that office and coming back saying we can put this, put in for this. Now, the work was done by, by everybody, but it was me, but it was me that brought it back.
Okay.
So, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is.
Okay.
When, when we, we, pick on people for spending money on going on conferences to educate people and, and, and make it better for the county, um, there are reasons why we go. It's not because we're on some, uh, luxurious vacation, uh, for the county, uh, uh, it's, it's work, and I'm very proud of the fact that I was able to do this. So, that's all I want, that's all I want.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, can we please take a vote?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Churchello?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. All right, we're gonna move on to department head updates, and we'll start with, uh, Allison.
Thank you. Allison Kivakowski, Senior Director of Human Resources, uh, our response for the Years of Service event, um, closed on the twenty-third. We have a total of sixty-six, um, employees that were, um, eligible for the Years of Service, fifteen employees, um, have responded, forty-one will be coming. Um, and we have thirty-eight guests, that's with, um, our O D Ds and everybody else, and with any of the employees that are bringing a guest. I'll be just reaching out to the Long Term Care, Chantel, the sheriff, and the Department of Corrections. We just have a few that we just wanna make sure they're not gonna come, and that's okay, but we just wanna make sure we've vetted everybody, because we have to do the food order Monday, and we wanna make sure we're accounted for everybody, the food.
So, so that's, I, my quick math, that's seventy-nine folks. Is that in line with approximately what we had anticipated when we looked at the budget?
Yes, I anticipated about eighty-five.
Okay, so this is where within, good.
Yeah, so it looks pretty good for us. Our annual food clinic is underway, and we've had great participation with that, there's been a lot of response to that. I have, uh, conducted phone screening meetings with Occupational Health Connections and Concentra, around a tentative contract with Occupational Health, uh, services to be able to stay on site. I know there was some stuff in the media about, um, a hold on services that C O E H had to put a hold on. Um, I did get clarification yesterday, the, um, occupational health thing is not on hold, they're going forward with that, but some of those other services, um, are being extended through December, is from what I'm understanding. Um, I'm working on a health watch E A P onsite services notification, just about the last day of services that would be offered onsite is November eighth. That's with Penny, our onsite clinician. We're gearing up for our breast cancer awareness informational ta, uh, table, that will be outside the Water Cafe Tower on October fifteenth. And we're assisting, um, the long-term care side of the house with the grant funded program related to some positions, and I know that will be discussed, uh, later on, and, um, that's all I have. It's, oh, and, um, very, very much appreciative to the, um, facilities operations. Um, the H R staff is back in the house over at our building, um, thank you to Robin, but just for all the crew that were in and out of there, doing all of the work, it is, um, everybody is extremely happy and pleased, and people that are coming in are very noticing the, uh, differences and making remarks. So hats off to Jude and her crew, um, we just wanna extend our gratitude, thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Okay, moving on to Chantel.
Hello, I'm Chantel Giakonin, I'm the Senior Director of Long Term Care Services. Our son is today, so still nursing five hundred and thirty-one, forty-eight on our assisted living for our COVID numbers. We have two staff members on the nursing home side, and that is all as of today, so that is exciting. Um, just some general things, the Alzheimer's blog is this Sunday, and we have a team going, so I hope to see some of you there. Um, continuing to just look at some of the systems that are in place and opportunities to kind of, um, tighten some of that and streamline something. I'm still working, as mentioned earlier, for the protocol agreements, so I will go into that. We had our initial meeting with. I'm still working, as mentioned earlier, for the protocol agreements, so I will go into that. We had our initial meeting with healthcare service group yesterday. Who received the grant um for just some general pieces for that, looking at which they can do again. Um Jude's team was present as well. So we were able to kind of have some general conversations, expectations and look at that. So that is kind of got the ball rolling a little bit. Um we officially started for at least the assisted life living side so far, the revenue cycle management meeting. Where we had a general kind of more educational of what it would look like, what's involved with it and the goals of it. Um to be able to have a, a more accountability around um. Collections and payments on that side. And other than that, my focus has been on staffing with um the HR team, so.
Thanks. I'm gonna do also a second plug for the Walk to End Alzheimer's. Um I participated in the walk last year. Um it's unfortunate, it's a great event. We walked through the, you go right through town. Um you know, it's really a nice. There was a lot of support from the county last year. We did, there was a great fundraising effort and.
Does it again?
Sunday, Sunday morning.
Yeah, our team's meeting at nine.
Right.
Yeah.
What's the distance? About a five kil.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Chuck?
Well, it's October now, so the month after quarter end, so it means that all those lovely grant deadline filing dates. Um are upon uh cert, upon me, I guess. Um so October would be filled with um submissions on anything that's a quarterly thing like grants or payroll taxes or. Uh the, the vet tax return, which is technically called in this, there's a fully quality assessment return that's due uh next week on the tenth. Yesterday, I, I went to Concord and uh worked with DuPont Group on composing a uh, a draft um HAC budget. That's part of my duties as um as the treasurer for the National Association of Counties. So we did hammer out a draft budget, so there'll be presentations next to the Commissioners Council. It will happen on the Monday, um the first one day of the HAC conference in November. That where the Commissioners um as a whole will uh decide on how we're gonna do the dues assessments.
Any highlights?
I, I think we're gonna basically what's going on, again, we're looking forward to next year. It's the fif- fifteenth anniversary of the association next year, so there's gonna be some special things, one-time things. That'll happen next year, so there is gonna be like an estimated thirty thousand addition for the overall HAC budget. Well, that one-third of that will be covered by official sponsors, because I think someone wants to, they might be fight for, who wants to be the prime sponsor. With it being the special fiftieth anniversary. Um and, and then uh there could be a special one-time assessment to all ten counties and even amount. Cover some of the other expenses. Um I think it's a, personally, I think it's responsible budget. You know, all of their costs were primarily held as level as possible. And let's see, in the Harvey Ward, I did not, we didn't fully, fully assign one inside to really get on for this week's agenda that played this year. So we'll get there as an ad hoc thing next week, so.
Well, thanks for your due diligence in terms of making sure, you know, that's. It's worth taking the time to make sure it's properly done, so thank you.
Yeah, I know there's some questions on the legal leases, things like that, that are usually part of the package too. I know that. It was some extra effort, because the first draft, I've always been releases from the subs.
Oh, yeah.
To Harvey, so there is, um so I held it up in the virtue as far as going for some of the subs they sent those legal leases. This card there on individual recs that go up into the Harvey invoice overall, so that was part of the, the delighted to. Again, this, the normal thing, very busy on, sorry, checkmate, senior director of finance, I, I didn't start off with that, sorry.
The man, the mystery.
And, and I also got a chance to talk to Jim Monahan of the DuPont Group as well, so I guess they're actually rebranding to be Monahan, I guess they're. Yeah, it's there, there, I guess that's where it originally worked for DuPont Group, but anyways. So I had some brainstorming about the potential legislation we're looking for it about the first eighteen months. The public health emergency where all the counties paid um more than what the non, the, what the non-federal share was.
Right, so that's.
We're trying to brainstorm different ways.
It's a clawback of getting money from the state that they promised us.
Right, because the states actually collected from the feds and from us for the same dollars and things.
Okay.
So trying to brainstorm a way that might be more, I guess, advertising possibly for the, the state to, again, kind of. Get back to counting some guns or maybe over an appropriate amount of time. So trying to work that out, because obviously states, you know, with the new, new, you know, uh central lawsuits, things like that, they're. They have other concerns for additional expenses, you know, for this next fiscal year, so. But just, there's many things, the legislative committee really has picked up again and Kathy's our, our chair for that. So they're very thankful for all of her efforts and efforts of everyone. I should look forward to another year testifying up in Concord. Both for and against that certain legislation.
We're good as well. It's like a hundred and seventy bills in right now, I would think.
Yes, there's a lot and there's another buy at tackle in November because this is every other year because there's potential, you know, where there's new racks coming in. There's another second buy at that rate for additional legislation to be required. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. Uh Leila.
Hi, good morning. Um next week's meeting is Wednesday.
We talked about that before we gave the announcement. I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry about that. It's, I'm, I'm the, I'm the prom child. Um I just, um so I appreciate any flexibility. It's all my fault. So any grievances with time changes, please just contact me directly. I really, seriously, I apologize.
So this is two o'clock. Um meeting is going to be next Wednesday at two PM. Is that, no?
I did need to address it, but, but I'm sorry, I'm the prom child. I have a. Stay tuned.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, um other than that, um the Department of Corrections, Posta Junior has been ordered and.
Oh, great.
Cancellation was, was present for too important.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, we'll continue with uh our department head updates and I invite the sheriff to join us next.
Uh good morning. Uh nothing really new to report. We continue to be extremely busy over here and that's it. Have a great week.
Great, thank you. Uh Jude?
Good morning. Uh Oswald in Facilities Operations. We really have nothing new to report either. Um we do have a, a new electrician starting on Monday. We're very excited. Um he came with a terrific resume. He's got about fifteen years' experience at a local hospital, so I think he's gonna work out well for us. Other than that, um if you have an open house, I would love to bring some people through the biomass plant. It shows really well. So, you know, we could add that to the tour.
Bring you with you.
Having taken the tour, it is awesome. It really is.
Yeah, thank you. That's all.
Okay, Kathy?
Good morning. Uh all is well over here. We had a couple of pretty big sales. One was ten point five million dollars cash. On Boyshead uh of a house and then uh another one with five million dollars. On, again, on Ocean Boulevard in Hampton. Yeah, so um obviously the rich get richer and the poor get poorer. What can I say? The only other thing I wanted to mention is I did mention to um Commissioner Cherichello, because he happened to reach out to me the other day. I was at Deerfield Fair and Stratford County had a booth for hiring. It was, and I don't know if you mentioned it, Brian, or not, but.
No, I didn't, Kathy. Thank you.
Pretty ingenious. It was, it was a lot of activity. There was a lot of activity at that, at that booth, so. In the future, you know, if we're looking for people, it might be a good idea. It's a, a good option because you got a lot of people making their way through. And other than that, I want to thank Leila. She helped me. Um I had a bid that had to go up and she was very helpful for me. And thank you. I appreciate it very much. Have a great day, everybody.
Hey, Jason.
Morning, everybody. Jason, I'm here, Superintendent Jail. Uh today we're at one forty-seven inside. Lots of training going on inside here since we had those multiple movements of supervisors last week. So a lot of, lot of stuff going on there. Uh we're starting to work on putting together our FTO program, which was in this last contract. Hillsborough County came over. We sat down with them. Um the lieutenants are working on that and I really hope we can get that going come late fall. It's gonna help with our um. Training of our new hires and even our people that have been around for a little bit. And um what's going on here? Uh just FYI, Lieutenant Warden uh will be retiring next June. Uh he has, uh we've put a tentative um position to open tentative hiring for somebody. Because we want to start the testing process now, so somebody can do some cross-training before he leaves us. Uh tomorrow, I'm in um at Primex, working with them, trying to create a specific supervisor. Um training for corrections, so I'm sitting down with them to work on that. And then this afternoon, sitting down with Robin, as we um, you guys author us, authorize us to get Reliance Learning. So we have our kickoff meeting today as we work on that. As we also are going, the uh staff's gonna have emails at some point, so we're gonna be working on that and I'm also putting word on our computers. So my staff can dump it into there, so maybe their spelling and some of the grammar will look a little better. And with that, that's where we're at. Thank you.
All right, fantastic. And I think that concludes our department head updates. Um and I'll move on to any news business or old business that somebody would like to bring up.
Um I have two pieces of, uh both new and old. One, uh we had a Gl- the, we sent out a survey about from Glendale. So I don't know if it'd be a good opportunity to talk about this now, or we'd rather just put it on the agenda for next week. I did, I did a, like, not, I did a fairly decent review of the reviews. Um and I would say overwhelming, you know, I, if there's one theme. Um or two themes, I should say. People don't want to see a reduction in the amount, the type of food, the variety. And they are concerned about increasing costs. So those were the takeaways that. But um interestingly, the, the um, you know, there's some range in what, people love the salad bar. And the um, that it's mostly used during lunch. Like the lunch hours are the most prominent, like eleven to one is the largest window of usage. So um for what it's worth, uh I think it's ripe for further discussion. But I don't know if you guys have read through those survey monkey reviews yet.
It wasn't compiled, you know, so I couldn't see a summary. It was, it seemed.
It had some bar graphs within, I mean, it really was very interesting. I'd say, you know, when you looked at zero, you know, with the scoring metric, zero to ten. If you look at zero to three in terms of pricing, that um comprised like fifty percent of uh the, the. Reviews, a hundred and nineteen reviews, if you will.
I have faith in Chantel to reel that whole situation in.
I just appreciate the faith you have for me.
I think, but I do think it dovetails with the second issue, the second uh new business item, which is like where we are. Making sure we get out that RFP for food services. And there was some, um you know, the superintendent sent um. It over to me for review for that RFP. Uh his thought under the house is outstanding. Um maybe, and I am bringing it up in new business so that um that discussion may, we can have that discussion. At where your end is and um because the, the DOC side is pretty buttoned up. I had one suggestion and. Um we should be endeavoring to get that out. If we can theoretically.
Compiling this RFP. Are you, is that on your hand, your?
So it was shared with us, in with Elaine. So Elaine has that piece. Um I have more knowledge now of kind of the system than what's in place. Which makes it a little easier for us around that side of it. Um so I mean, I don't have any problem in working in conjunction with him. And having it compiled, um if Elaine already has their piece as you asked.
Okay, so when do you expect to have something to?
I will prioritize it and get it to for, I can have it for.
Oh, I was thinking if we could have it at the end of the month, that would be.
Yeah, it's not that.
Line that I was intending on you being, so.
Okay.
Does that seem reasonable to you, Superintendent? I mean, yours is pretty.
Yes, I did. I'll, uh I looked at you. One thing, it's easy. I can, I think I could fix that and uh I think it's pretty good from there. I can work next door and we'll just try to. Mesh it together.
Right, and so that gives a little bit of working time and if we do it by the end of the month, that puts us in a good spot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Churchill, thank you. I just want to chime in on the, the surveys. Um I didn't get to see each and every one, but I will. I was impressed that in a lot of surveys, they actually gave high schools. Uh a lot of times you had nines and eights, so it wasn't all negative comments on the surveys.
Do you, were those just the paper copies or were those the? The combination, the whole thing?
It's, it's everything. I mean, obviously you have comment sections, which I probably, we really want to kind of focus. And there's a good constructive criticism there. I, I get it. Um but there's also a lot of people that uh think that they're doing a good job. Um so I wanted to point that out, but um the other thing is, is Commissioner Coyle has brought up just probably a couple of meetings ago. That we should have these uh meetings, the commission should split up.
Yeah.
And have meetings with staff just to go over why we did the things that we did. I don't know if that's moved forward at all. I don't know. Because one of the comments, I'm not gonna get into the details, but they, they had a question that would be simply answered in one of these for, form. Forms that we could actually have and maybe bring some understanding as to why we, you know, why we did what we had to do.
I agree. I mean, I think that, that was a takeaway from our perspective of giving more explanation to the individuals utilizing.
Yeah, I just didn't know if anything was moving forward.
Why don't, we don't need to, at the end of the meeting, we can just do scheduling.
I think you were gonna reach out or ask all the department heads when it should be scheduled, what works best for their employees.
Okay.
I thought we were gonna try to do it at shift change-ish, so that people coming on or off shifts could. Um could attend, and that way it's not a conflict with scheduling. So.
Yeah, which I thought was a good idea. I just think, you know, we should really move forward because it's gonna, you could have some back and forth questions to get to.
Okay, any other further discussion on this topic? Any other new business?
I do.
Uh Jason?
I, just an FYI, listening to NPR this morning, everybody, I'm sure you've heard about the strike that's going on out on the docks. Um so imports coming in is, is a problem. And they pointed out that thi- this could significantly increase costs of food and other things. And interesting enough, one of the things they talked about was is supply of tires. They said, if you need tires, now's the time to get them before they get jacked up in price. There may be an opportunity to bring in over Canada and down. Um but just FYI, to keep a, a track on that, the longer this goes, the more money it might cost all of us.
Well, the only thing I could say is, is I mean, it's, they're, they're in day three of the strike, so um. Who knows, maybe they settle that soon, hopefully, and uh it's an election year, thirty days before an election, and they even decides to strike. Timing's everything, right? And they've got a little bit of leverage there, but hopefully they can come to terms and, and then strike soon. But we'll keep our eye on that.
Sheriff, do we have any um. Immediate plans to be buying tires or anticipate something in the next three or four months that is significant that maybe we should move up?
Well, I don't, I mean, i- i- it's definitely, I mean, they're definitely not cars, but that's something I'd have to talk to Jimmy Dills about.
Right.
It's, see, because I mean, all those tires are, are whether it purchased through engineering and maintenance anyways. And uh the state has a bid on those ti- uh that we get a, well, not a state bid, but we get a state discount on all those tires. So I mean, I'm gonna, actually, I have to go over and see him today, but I will talk to him and see if, I don't know, Jude, do you think we should?
A majority of our vehi- a majority of our vehicles are going in for inspection this month.
Right.
Um so I, I think he'll know pretty quickly if there are any that are gonna be due for replacement uh to.
Cause I mean, most of my vehicles are Sep- September and in, in October.
We generally do a tire order twice a year, so if he's about to do one, I'll absolutely ask him to follow it.
Yeah, just tell, I mean, just tell him, you just, I mean, look and see what we have and just maybe. And order, order up a, you know, a couple of extra sets or whatever, but I think, I think honestly, I don't, I mean, I know. There's a lot of tire companies in the state of New Hampshire. I think the, I'm not sure, but I think. Uh Sullivan Tire has the um bid on the tires.
They do, yeah.
So I don't think that we're gonna have a problem, but I mean, if we can order some extras, let's order them up, so.
We'll follow up, definitely.
But not only tires, though, we should probably think about ordering maybe, you know, a couple of extra sets of brakes. But not only tires, though, we should probably think about ordering maybe, you know, a couple extra sets of brakes and rotors, just in case. No, I mean, there's gonna be shortage on that too.
I'm sorry, I think Jimmy has a pretty healthy shelf stock, but I'll definitely have the conversation with him today.
Yeah, I mean, I know he's pretty well stocked, pretty well over there, he looks into the future, he does a great job over there when it comes to our cars.
Thank you.
I also heard that chocolate was gonna get, uh, set back too, so.
We're ordering today.
We're purchasing domestic chocolate, so I don't think that will be a problem. Isn't Lindt domestically made in Manchester or someplace?
Right up there.
Grab them.
Right, yeah, okay, so.
But, yes.
Yeah, it's Dutch chocolate, but are wherever.
The recipes.
Yeah, recipes.
In fact, I did a tour last year at the, uh, Lindt factory.
Oh, really? Kind of like Lucille Ball, you know?
Not gonna reveal how many.
Okay, so, does that conclude our new business, old business?
Yeah.
Uh, do we have anybody from the public who would like to make a comment?
You guys know I have to at least say something. Anyway, uh, Tommy Tommrowell, how, I hope everybody's good, I just, a couple of things, you did announce the hiring of an electrician, and I want you to know that it's not me. Um, second thing is that I got to tour the building, the new building on Tuesday with a group of people, Jude and her next in charge and Captain Walsh and Chuck Nicholson and everybody, and I was over there for a couple of hours. Actually, they wondered where I went, because I just kept walking around, I found myself walking by myself on all three floors. And I did find out that Kathy Stacy does have the best office. And now we have to figure out how that works, Kathy drew the good straw though, but beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. Uh, everybody should be proud. I did have one question regarding, I know we've been talking about an RFP that's gonna be going out. Uh, I'm just questioning, uh, where do we stand with Meals on Wheels? Because presently, Glendale is there and they do the Meals on Wheels, what part of the equation is Meals on Wheels gonna have? Say, for instance, something happens with Glendale, uh, what are we doing with Meals on Wheels if they're not there?
I think it's a, I mean, it's, I think it is something we're gonna have to address or in conjunction with Meals on Wheels. But I think the only reasonable thing to do at this point is to put out the RFP, see where it goes and then address that as a.
Is Meals on Wheels sharing staff with Glendale or just space?
So from my understanding, it's Glendale staff is the one that's doing those components. They're, um, I'm gonna say separate in some ways from the staff that do other pieces, but they are the, it's that staff that brings breakfast over with a, um, gel as well. So there is some minor process in it as well.
So that might need to be included in the RFP?
We can't include that in the RFP.
We cannot?
No, that's like.
So, okay, so that's a contract between Meals on Wheels and whoever our provider is moving forward. I guess the new provider would have to be amenable to something that, for us to continue to support Meals on Wheels, so I, I don't know what that is.
It, from my understanding in my conversations with Glendale, and I can get more clarification, I actually have our weekly standing meeting this afternoon with them of how much crossover exactly has been involved, if that would be helpful. Um, there was only a few small things that they were able to say, for example, I believe that, please correct me if I mispeak, that they bring breakfast over, but it's, they don't bring lunch and dinner, so there's some of those like little small things.
So, coordinating that far.
I can get that clarification during today's meeting.
Just on that same point, I think, uh, on that point, that Glendale actually will deliver those meals to, because it's all of Rockingham County, so you've got, you know, the dairy sale on Windham Side, way over there on the west side of Rockingham County, but they deliver those meals to certain locations, uh, so that the, the the volunteers can actually get them out, which brings up a good point, because if Glendale's not there, you, you also have to do logistics on, on how they're gonna get these meals over to the places that they go to. And I really think about that until, uh, Tom mentioned them.
I can ask for that clarification today, and if the individuals that I aren't, because it's the two individuals here, I'm happy to go higher and ask for that information, I'll get it to you.
Yeah, if I could, if I could just say, you know, Meals on Wheels, I mean, for forty-two years, they were made in Lindmas, and it took a lot and we were lucky to actually talk Deb Peru, who retired, uh, to go with Meals on Wheels. But there is seven drop-offs in Rockingham County. I mean, i- in a perfect world, hopefully, everything works out and Glendale stays, stays there and we don't have to worry about it. But I think it's real important, because I drive for some of the elderly in Sandown and I used to ask them, once we converted from Lindmas to Brentwood, to our facility, uh, they took, they said, I don't know what they did, but the food is great, it used to be terrible. So I, I just have a, uh, a concern, but in a perfect world, hopefully, everything works out with, with Glendale and so on. But I just think it's something that needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you, Tom. Uh, that concludes our agenda and now I take, accept the motion to move into our non-public session.
Right, so moving to pursue into ninety-one A.
All those in favor of moving to non-public? Thank you, we'll see you after the. We are back from our non-public session and Commissioner Coyle has a couple of motions for us.
Yes, we had five non-public sessions. Um, I moved to seal numbers three and four, and I moved to seal those minutes indefinitely, because it could adversely affect the reputation of an individual other than a member of this board.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I may move to seal meeting minutes, I'm sorry, the meeting minutes number one indefinitely, because it could render a proposed action ineffective.
All those in favor?
Aye, and I moved to seal the fifth non-public session, those minutes until July first, twenty twenty-five, because it could render a proposed action ineffective.
All those in favor? Okay.
I moved to adjourn.
Okay.
All those in favor? Aye, okay, we're adjourned, thank you very much.